Call to order, the city council work session for CDV's Grand Forks Tuesday, February 12th, 2019 is now fly the clock. And city clerk, please call roll.
Mayor Steve Gander.
Here.
Council President Mark Olstead.
Here.
Council Vice President Chad Grassel. Council Members Clarence Vedder.
Here.
Dale Helms.
Yes.
Tim Johnson.
Here.
Mark Demers.
Present.
That is term quorum. Number one, consider recoding 2018 city project number three, parking lot improvements. Mr. Emery.
Thank you, Mr. President. So after the request to proceed with receiving quotes again for the VFW parking lot was basically voted down at your January 15th council meeting, the mayor had asked that I kind of revisit the project to see if there could be some changes, modifications made, things that we could do to help kind of reduce the overall project cost, one of which was removing the storm sewer. So I did look at that. I think by building up the grade kind of on the west side, kind of along the VFW there, I think we could kind of get most of that to flow from west to east and pretty much drain that lot by gravity. I still like the idea of the catch basin better, but again, if we're looking for ways to save money, you know, we can make that work by gravity. So the other thing we did there is we just reduced our overall base thickness a little bit, took out basically the GeoGrid fabric, you know, kind of keeping in mind a little bit here too that, you know, we're not designing this parking lot for a 50-year design life or something, so. And then also, I did have epoxy paint striping in there. If I change that to a latex paint, we would have some additional savings there too, so. And then, which I probably did not clarify the first time, is in that overall project cost, there is some existing, there is an existing driveway and sidewalk that kind of leave that parking lot right now just south of the intersection. We would eliminate that driveway. Access to the parking lot would come from the alley. And then we'd be able to do some needed sidewalk repairs there too. And then also, there's some drive over curb there. We would pull out that drive over curb and put in full curb, put in the sidewalk with the brick paver, so it kind of matched, you know, the kind of the whole downtown there. So that entire work, you know, construction wise, we were estimating about $12,664. So I wanted to kind of break that out to you realize there is some costs there that ultimately, even if the parking lot project doesn't move forward, those are probably some repairs that the city should make regardless, so. So with that, you can see kind of under the proposed budget, parking lot, you know, with construction, all of the SOP costs, we're looking at about $81,905. And then with the sidewalk driveway work, again, we're looking at about $12,664 in construction, or a total of $15,703. One thing I probably should point out is, under the plans and specs, there's about $7,800 there. Of that, you know, for the plans that we prepared the first time, we have billed about $4,500 of that, so, you know, some of that money has already been spent. Proposed funding for the project, the city does have TIF dollars that they would be able to utilize for this work. And talking to Carla, she said that the TIF districts had been decertified, so that those TIF dollars basically can be utilized anywhere within the community for infrastructure-type projects as this, so. And talking to Carla, there's a pretty good balance in that TIF account to, you know, pay for this, so. So I guess, just looking for, I guess, maybe a recommendation from you, if you want us to proceed with making a few of these changes in the plans and then moving ahead and getting quotes, so.
Mayor. What would you say is the tentative, and approximately, what would be the savings in this version compared to the first?
Probably in that $10,000 to $12,000.
Okay, about 12,000. And again, the reason, and I even supported not going forward with it last fall, because all the quotes came in much higher than we thought. And so the only reason, and we all agreed very unanimously, this wasn't, last fall wasn't the time to do this. And for all we know, the quotes could come at this or even lower, depending upon how eager or hungry these contractors might be. I'd love to see it. I know there will be a discussion, and it's a good discussion, about what is our long-term plan for that property? And I think our reluctance to sell it to someone as a parking lot or as any other use is, we do want to control what would go in there. And so far, no one has brought a proposal that would really fit properly in that site. What I would look for, and what I would ask this body to do in terms of going forward and doing a project in there, a building project, step one, a commercial tenant committed long-term. It's not going to be okay to build an apartment building with a vacant commercial space on the main floor and then have that property owner take three or four or five years and say, "We can't find a tenant for that space." And even some threats, I heard on that first one, now where Up North Pizza is, some threats of, "We may have to convert that to a residential space on the main floor." That's unacceptable. That is not a good use for that downtown district, to think about a full apartment building all the way to the main floor. So it has to be a commercial, I believe, on the main, according to the zoning, and a commitment from a commercial entity such as a grocery store, a corner market, a commitment like that is what I would be looking for to agree with any sort of project going forward. Not like what happened on Up North, where you had a vacant commercial space for how many years. And because we also have commercial spaces available up and down that street even now. And so I think the best thing we can do is upgrade that corner to a well-designed, well-lighted parking lot and wait for a good property or good project to come along saying, "We have a commercial entity willing to make a long-term commitment there," and then go forward with that. Also, by the way, which should include parking. What we missed on the Up North project was really parking for that facility. We missed it for particularly the commercial part of it. The tenants, I think, have good off-street parking available to them, but we can do better. Whatever we're going to do on this corner, if it ever is developed, it could be five years, 10 years, 15 years, I would look for a commercial commitment right up front, not an empty space with apartments above. And I would insist upon, at least if it were to me, a parking plan better than what happened on Up North building. So in those, that's why I think it could still be a while. Again, because also, available commercial space up and down the strip, and those could fill first, they'd be more economical than building new, yeah, so someone could move in there if there was such a demand. And that's where I think this could stay a very nicely lit, nicely striped, fully utilized parking surface for a while, a good while.
Mr. Reapell.
Are we going to get $130,000 out of that lot to pay for the parking, paving, and the cost of that real estate?
Over the years, absolutely yes, in property taxes. It's good, it looks like, it looks like somebody's back alley right now, nobody wants, it's not even an attractive property the way it is. It looks like somebody's back alley. It can, it can present better than it does.
How are we going to get property taxes on our own property?
Well, you're saying, would we sell it and would someone build there?
Right.
And could we recoup that expense? And the answer is yes. They would build a building which would render significant property taxes over decades, way more than recoup our expense.
How are we going to charge Up North and the VFW for the use of that lot?
Absolutely.
$1,000 a month, split two ways?
Some number.
$12,000 a year?
Some number.
10 years it's paid for?
I'd roll it into, and I think we can agree, I'd roll it into an overall parking plan for our downtown district. I'd roll it in, because others have access to hard-surface striped parking right now. I would make it very similar to that.
That would have to be done before I'd ever vote yes for the parking lot. We'd have to have it done first.
So that would be for final approval. This is simply to get some quotes, just like the place where we were last fall, and there'll be another vote to finally let the quotes. I would love to just see where the quotes come and to try to visualize. I want to talk to the VFW, for example, will they light that back end of the parking lot? Will they do the lighting part of it? I would think they really want to do that, safety to their patrons and just the overall aesthetics of it. So I mean, little things like that that can come in.
Snow removal, maintenance of it.
There you go. That'd be great. So.
For now, that's all I got.
Anybody else have anything on that? Anybody have any problems? Mr. Demers.
Thank you, Mr. President. What's the total amount in that TIF account?
There is, and the one district, $656,000. And the other one, there's $272,000. And we are collecting $2,400 a month from Minnesota Heights in that account.
For how long?
Minnesota Heights has another seven, maybe, I'm sorry, I don't think.
Right.
Check on that, sorry.
And that money is completely unencumbered?
Correct. And when we decertify the TIP fund, the TIP districts, we set it up so that that money can be used anywhere in the city for infrastructure. Anywhere in the city.
Public improvement infrastructure, to that extent, it's usable. It couldn't be used, for example, to build housing or something like that. So we're saying it's entirely unencumbered is going beyond. It has limits, but it has to be used for public use, public infrastructure-type activities anywhere in the city.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Demers? Anybody else have any questions or comments or any reasoning we shouldn't get it re-quoted? Okay. Appreciate it. Number two, consider plan review for River View 11th edition.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a couple of sheets just to hand out. This is where I think the tablets will become a little bit more user-friendly for you, because there were some things that you could not see that you can see clear when you kind of zoom it in and make changes to some of the layers. So let's do this, do this. Right now, the former mayor, Lynn Staus's house is for sale. They would like to move a property line, as you can see, which is Lot 1. They'd like to move that further to the east and make two more equal-sized lots. They do have someone who would like to purchase the home, but not the garage, and they have someone who would like to purchase the garage. What our zoning requirements are is that if you're in an R1 district, you have to have the ability to build a house on that piece of property. Therefore, we had to make Lot B capable of building a single-family home on it, and I had put in the requirements. Lot width a minimum of 65 feet, lot length of 110, and square footage of 8,400 square feet. So both lots would be able to meet that. One of the concerns we had was the floodplain line, because you're required to build two feet above that floodplain elevation, which is why I gave you the zoomed out, or zoomed in aerial, so that you could see, in fact, where that floodplain line is, which is on the east side of the garage. And so, based on that, we took a number of different houses in the area, we took their footprint, we put it in there based on what the elevations were, and we were able to get a house in there that would meet setbacks and the lot size requirement. So there is discussion that the person that owns Lot B does not want to build a house, and that's immaterial to us. They just have to have a lot that allows for that. So what I'm asking today is, if you have any concerns or questions before I go ahead and then allow the property owner to move forward with the public notice and the simple subdivision requirements, which is 10-day notification to neighbors, 10-day notification in the paper, and then it moves to the city council for review and possible approval. So, does anybody have any questions?
I have one.
Yes.
Mayor.
And Nancy, you live not so far from there, and I think we can agree, I hope we can agree that that, from a pedestrian standpoint, is a really dicey situation, getting pedestrians through that area. Is there anything we could do in this replat, or is there already enough room in that street right-of-way if we did want to come with a pedestrian element somewhere in there?
The problem that we run into is, in fact, the Cooley and the bridge there, and trying to fit pedestrian movement into that area. Now, in terms of right-of-way itself, to put in a sidewalk, there is room to put in a sidewalk, however, it would be back of curb, and as we've seen this winter, that becomes very difficult to maintain, snow removal on. We don't see too many people walking that in the winter, but I have seen people jog in the winter. So it is still, I mean, there's still pedestrians on that road. So there's been some discussion of putting it on the south side of 10th, because the south side of 10th, when you get across the Cooley to the east, has more room in their right-of-way for a sidewalk. And so, you know, looking into the future, it seems more reasonable to look at the right-of-way on the south side of 10th than it would be on the north side.
So you don't see anything that should be included in the replat to facilitate that? We're good?
Well, in order for us, I think, to establish right-of-way, I'm not sure if we would have to purchase.
We would, because it's not, it's not, it's already platted property.
It's already platted, so I'm not sure if we're, we're ready yet to purchase right-of-way or an easement. I mean, even with an easement, they still own that, so.
Anybody else have any questions for Nancy? Mr. Vedder.
Essentially, three lots, then?
No, it would be two. If you see where Lot 1 is and where that dotted line is, it would move further to the east.
So the dotted line is the line that you want to move?
Yes. Yeah, that, that was current, that was platted back in 1975.
Okay.
Because that was a section line, and that's why there was such a small lot, and then longer lots, because the gentleman that owned that property up to the section line platted it and sold it back in 1975. And then in 1977, River View 2nd that you see there, that was replatted, so that the, the lot where the house and the lot where the garage sits, that's, those two were, were developed at that time, in 1977. So it has been this way for quite a long time. The properties behind, because they became landlocked, ended up getting split and sold to the property owners that would be to the west of them, so.
Mr. Demers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Has there been an estimate done on what size house can be put on Lot B?
Well, it has to be a minimum size of, I think we have 1,100 square feet.
And that will fit with the setback?
Yes, yep. We took, we took the two lots on, it would be Lot 2 and Lot 1 on the south side of 10th. One is a split level and one is a ranch, and both of them fit on there.
And they're 1,100 square?
They're more than that.
Okay. Because it would probably have to be main floor, because you wouldn't be able to start with a basement, right?
No.
I mean.
No. So I mean, if you did a split level, you know, you could do footings and a crawl space.
Well, you wouldn't be, you'd have to go up, though. You can't go down from that.
Yes. Well, they don't have the other elevations on this, on this property, so floodplain regulations can be really unique in how you build. I mean, once you get to that floodplain elevation, as long as the first floor, first habitable floor is two feet above, you can still put footings and a crawl space underneath, provided that those utilities and different things are elevated to above the floodplain elevation. It's, it's a very unique type of a scenario that FEMA allows, so. So I mean, there are ways to put in something below the floodplain elevation.
And then are there any considerations for access management along that corridor?
It's a local street.
It's a state aid street.
It is a state aid street, but it's still a local street. So because there's no access on that side, other than that, that driveway, you know, it, we wouldn't have any issues with, with having a driveway come off of a house, so.
Anybody else have anything?
And again, like I said, the person that's going to own Lot B has no intentions, nor do the sellers have any intentions of putting a house on there. They may in fact place a covenant on there that no house is built, and that's completely up to them. However, for our requirements, we cannot split a lot in a residential area without allowing it to be, you know, split so that a house can be built on it and it meets all of our R1 requirements, which this would.
So in, like, an R1 neighborhood, potentially, like, a developer could put all garages up? It doesn't have to be residential in nature? I mean, you could put, you could have a block where across the street you have everybody's, I'm not saying anybody would do this, but you could have garage, 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 and no houses, if you wanted. And you could rent those out? Because you can rent.
You cannot rent garage space, because that would be a commercial entity. You can rent for residential purposes. If somebody rents a home, you know, as a whole, that still meets the R1 requirements. But if they're renting a garage, then it becomes commercial, because it becomes commercial space, so.
I think what you're asking is, if, as long as the lot on that, let's say, across the street would, would have the ability in the, to meet the setbacks for having a house.
Right.
Theoretically, they could do that.
They can do that.
And that's my point is.
Yes, they could, but they still couldn't rent the garage. The person across the street would have to own it, or the person next door would have to own it.
And that's my point, is I want, I don't think we want to get into the situation where we're renting.
No.
We want storage spaces in residential neighborhoods, and.
No, we don't.
You can see where this could become that, if, if they say there's no house covenant or whatever, you know, either that person, or someone is going to buy it and use it themselves, or how do you, how do you monitor whether or not people are renting it to someone else to use?
Well, it's much like the East Grand Forks, Grand Forks apartment rentals, I look at them daily. It's very easy to see who's renting without obtaining a rental, you know, registration, or if they're renting, I saw one the other day, and we've sent him a notification and removal, because he was renting it out to three or four different college students, separate spaces, main floor, and that's not allowed in a.
Right.
R1 area.
But monitoring residential rentals is probably more obvious than people renting out their garage space, or?
If you look at a majority of the lots in East Grand Forks, there are not many lots that somebody's going to want to build a garage and pay for the specials on it, or the taxes on it, that would be that large to have a residential home on it. It's not something that is a typical type of situation.
But I think what you're getting at is, if it was, if they're going to be renting out the garage, just the, chances are, probably would, unless it was just between two private people, that wouldn't go there. But if they're advertising for it, it probably would show up at where.
Yes.
Where we monitor for those, but theoretically, or.
Theoretically, yes.
It's possible that somebody could just, you know, "I know him, and I know he won't look at for space, and I'll rent," but in that case, we wouldn't be aware of it.
No.
We'd have to be, or if the neighbors were aware of it and complained or something like that, they'd probably get notified and something like that.
And if I just may, on this particular site, we already spoke with them and said, "Hey, you need to bring this out to 50 feet and, so that it could meet our codes." That wasn't the original plan, and we just said we weren't even going to bring it forward if it didn't meet what our current code requires. So then it's been modified, and that's why it's here today.
Yes. And, you know, we're bringing it to your attention. I don't think they want to move forward on it, however, I think they would have concerns if they're meeting our R1 requirements, that they could not move the property line, because they could still sell the two lots independently, and we would have no recourse of them, stopping the sale of the two lots to two separate individuals, so. So this is, in essence, is, you know, not changing it too much from our standpoint, so.
And it does not require any kind of variance or anything? It matches up exactly with our setbacks?
Nope, and we, and we can't. We can't make them more non-conforming, we can't make the garage itself non-conforming, and we can't make a new lot that would require a variance off the bat, so.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? If not, we'll move it on.
Okay, so this will not go to council next week. I guess I'm just making sure that you're okay for me to go ahead and publish the notice next week.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Wonderful. Number three, discussion on ATV, snowmobile, and special-use vehicle ordinances. Ms. Nelson.
A couple weeks ago, we started talking about the ATV ordinance, and during that discussion, snowmobiles were brought up, golf carts were brought up, and it was asked that all of our ATV, snowmobile, and special-use vehicle ordinances were all kind of looked at at the same time. So this time in the packet, I have just our city code of those three ordinances, and I did not include any other city this time. Some of the things I know that had been mentioned, we talked about, was making our greenway rules, our policy, and turn that into ordinance form to try and keep motorized vehicles out of the greenway. One thing I made note on, on the RCA, is that the snowmobile ordinance already prohibits operation of a snowmobile on public property, playgrounds, recreation area, and they're not supposed to be on a flood control levee. There was also discussion on items required, when we were talking about side-by-sides, what might be required to make something street legal. Under our special-use vehicle ordinance, there is a list, and it includes headlights, taillights, brakes, I think seat belts, a horn, I think that's most of it. I'm probably missing something. There was also discussion about, you know, registration under the special-use vehicle they're supposed to get, and I don't believe we have any right now, but if they, if they want to apply for a special-use vehicle permit, there's a $10 fee, and it's a year or an annual fee, something that they would have to reapply for each and every year. So I guess, just looking for discussion, direction, are you happy with how these look? What would you like changed? And once we kind of have gone through and discussed everything, I think a big push from staff is going to be doing some public service announcements, getting, getting this information out there and readily available. The one thing that I'm really actually looking forward to is, once we have our city channel up, we can have public service announcements running constantly, get our information. I know one thing that isn't well-known is, we do have a pet ordinance, and you are supposed to license your pets. A lot of people don't know that, but just, you know, stuff with the greenway, it's not supposed to be motorized. I don't, I have a list upstairs, so I've already started on that. You know, using our local media outlets, getting stuff on our city page, or on our city website, getting it up on the Facebook page, and any suggestions from you guys are welcome. So if there's something that you can think of that we can utilize, let us know, and otherwise, I'm turning it over to you.
One question you have with the permit, what is required to get that permit? Is it, they have to provide?
We've never had a permit. Is it an ordinance?
Is it required to show that they have insurance on it?
Well, it depends upon what you're actually looking at. You know, if it's the, if it's somebody that wants to drive a golf cart on the road because they're a special needs or disabled individual.
The ordinance states for the special use, that, on the application, the permit shall include the name and address of the applicant, make, model, year, serial number of the special-use vehicle, their current driver's license, or a reason for not having one, and any other information the city would require. So that is kind of what's supposed to be on the application, and so, I mean, as a, I think with the ATV, they have to give me insurance, so that's something that we already collect. So it's definitely something that can be added on.
Why would we have, the reason why they don't have a license? I mean, they shouldn't be getting the permit.
Well, actually, if it's a special.
I understand that circumstances.
Yeah, special needs one, but if there's, if it's for one of these other items, that's a different story, I believe.
So, if you have a vehicle that. So, do, if you have a vehicle that you have to license with the state anyway, how long is that registration good for? It's not annual, correct? Is it one year?
It is one year.
Okay. So, are these permits, you have to renew every year to make sure you provide that you register the vehicle every year?
That could be something requested.
Good.
Yep.
Does, does $10 cover even your cost on it?
I'd say, no, I...
No, it doesn't.
Shouldn't be covering our cost, at least?
Well, I'm getting into that permit question right away. Well, I, I mean, what all goes into it? How is...
And there's, there's, there's debates about, about that as well, as far as, and that's a policy decision, whether, where you set the permit licensing fee. There's some cities that set them below cost to make them more accessible, so that people are less likely to say, I'm not going to pay that, I'm just going to risk. Particularly, you see this more for things like, say, like, pet licenses and things like that, they try, they keep them artificially low, so that it's not prohibitive for people to get it, get them. And then there's other cities that say, the cost is what it is, and we're going to recoup our costs, which we are legally allowed to do. So that's more of a policy decision.
The reason I ask that is that, I mean, if you have permit fee to do this, what's an average registration cost for one of these items? Do you know what it is? Let's say you want, today, get your, Mike, you went and got yours, how much would it cost you to get everything? Two hundred dollars, a hundred dollars? Or is it like a...
Two hundred and two. Mine.
And yours is, what, in eighteen? 2018, 2019?
Where?
Yours, uh, 2018?
Well, my, the model's a fifteen.
Fifteen?
But I've tweaked it quite a bit since I bought it.
So that fee, is that a one-year fee, or a three-year fee?
One.
One year for two oh two?
Something I was going to recommend you have, maybe, Mark, David alluded to it, is sixteen-year-old minimum.
For driver.
Right. And that's technically a state law for ATVs and my type.
And I think it's, it would require that anyway.
Right.
Licensed driver.
Right.
Do we allow the snowmobilers at a younger age with the snowmobile certificate? Yeah, that was my memory.
And then I believe that that follows state law as well.
Exactly.
Yeah.
If I may, the, the, the direction that I think I would need, if this is something that you want us to do, is I need to know whether or not you want ATVs or not, what limits you want on ATVs. ATVs aren't the same as a UTV, you know, so everything kind of gets lumped up, but lumped together, and, and if you want to do this, is there any restrictions? Or do you want it to just be a free-for-all, so that people can just drive them all over the street? You know, so I, and I, and I don't mean to be facetious, but it, it goes from none to everything, or something in between, and that's a policy decision from this group, as opposed to asking Megan or I just to shotgun out an ordinance, and then figure out if you guys want to agree to it or not.
On the enforcement side, the simpler you can keep it, the easier, of course, it is for officers actually to handle it, of course. You read some of the ordinances now, and it's, you know, it talks about various CCs, and things like that, and officers are, may have a very difficult time trying to figure some of that stuff out. The simpler you can keep it for them, the more likely they are to get to it.
I envision people driving their lawn, riding lawnmowers down the middle of the road, because it's, it's a lot...
Mr. Dorrance?
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess I've thought about this quite a bit, and I kind of brought it up at the end of the discussion last week, or two weeks ago. In thinking about what, what Chief Headland's comments were about, you know, his officers' issues, potential issues with trying to enforce, trying to think about administration's difficulties with, not only just coming up with a permitting process, but then also trying to keep that up to, up to date. We see, probably since when some of these, our own ordinances were developed to now, which is only, you know, fifteen, twenty, you know, time period, we've seen an explosion of different categories, different sizes, different, you know, and then it's almost, you're almost going to get to the, not that it's the same thing, but when we were chasing the, the spice, remember, when we were talking about spice? All they'd do is they'd change one little thing, and then it, it was legal, again, you know, so try not to chase what the new technology is, what the new classification is. I think if we thought about it differently, instead of the city becoming the administrator of the permitting process, I would, I would recommend that we use the state's permitting process for any vehicle that's already required by the state, whether it's a motorcycle, car, any other motorized vehicle, any other motorized vehicle that, and then, like, like you said, you just say, you can be on the street if you're a motorized vehicle, you have to, if you can't keep up with the legal speed limit, you have to stay to the right, or something that would make sense about traffic safety and, and flow, which would give the officers something very specific to look at, you know, is, well, no, you can't drive a lawnmower down the middle of the road. If, if you are going to drive it, you have to drive on the side. I would agree that you should be of a certain age, or have a license, or some other permitting process that's already, the, the state already has, use that. And then I would just say that we require that you have the same type of liability that a car owner has to drive their car, and, and allow the insurance companies to figure the rest out. I mean, I don't know what that would cost for folks, but just thinking about adding a $10 fee, trying to maintain that, trying to order stickers, and all these other things that would try to identify to make, it seems very difficult, when, like I said, if you can make, or like the chief said, is, if you can make the, the lawn, make it more of a traffic-type enforcement, making sure that we identify where they can go, if they're, if we want to limit access to certain roads, or whatever, and then if, if they're impeding, or the traffic flow, or traffic safety, in any way, that can be cited. And then, as part of that, they would check to see if they have a license and, and insurance, and if they don't, they would be, there would be a fine in the ordinance that would say, you're going to get insurance, you know. So, like I said, I think that gets more simplified, it takes the headache of the administration out of our hands, it would allow people to do kind of what they need to do, and if the insurance companies think it, it's not going to be safe for people to be insured on a motor scooter, you know, two-wheeled motor scooter, then it's probably not a good idea, because they're thinking completely about saving money for the bottom line, I guess, so...
If it isn't licensed, it shouldn't be on the road, right, chief? Like a lawnmower?
What about a bicycle? I mean, we have lots of things that aren't licensed that get on the road, I mean...
I guess it depends on how strict you want to be on it. If, if Tim is out mowing his front yard, and he knows that Grandma Moses down the road needs a lawnmower, and he's a nice enough guy to drive down there, and what, should we be citing him for that? Now, the other end, if he's using his lawnmower to drive to the other end of town, I, I, to be honest with you, I, I kind of like Mr. Dorrance's idea. It's, it's certainly from, from a purely law enforcement perspective, it's the most easily enforceable. But, yeah, there's, there's valid arguments both ways.
Mr. Johnson?
You know, whatever we do, we're going to, I go, I go with the state, with, we've got this state recreation area, these people are going to be bringing in units, they're from different areas, different states, you know, I mean, we're going to, we're going to run into that, and with the state recreation area. So whatever we do, we got to be thinking of that, too.
I think the information that Megan gave us, it says in here that there's state law requirements that ordinances must have in it. You know, one is the insurance, which requires a minimum of, as a motorcycle insurance, listed in here.
And if they don't have it, then they can get it through the state.
Right.
So, it's not like you're not going to be able to get it. You know, if I, if I can just put my two cents in, and it's not very popular, these are recreational vehicles, ATVs, off-road vehicles, that's what the purpose of them are. The purpose isn't for, well, even Mr. Powers to be running from the south end to the north end on the road. You know, they're made for going up into Beltrami Forest, they're made for going down on the trails, they're made for those types of things. Golf cor, cars are made for golf courses, you know, they're typically not made to be running around town, and from my standpoint, that becomes very simple. You're going to have one heck of an enforcement issue if you think that you're not going to allow them on the greenway, and you're going to allow them on any street in the city, from preventing them from going over on the greenway, from going down, and then how are we going to enforce that? We can't, we don't have a snowmobile, we don't have a, an ATV, it just, it, to me, it's just, you're opening it up for just an enforcement issue. And I understand snowcats already are able to drive down the side road, but typically, they're not driving in town. What they want to do is get to somewhere so they can get out of town, you know, and go snowmobiling. It's not utilizing it for transportation, for some other mode of transportation, because you like to feel the wind in your face while you're driving in the summer. You know, it's, it, to me, it's, there's two different reasons that you have the things.
Have you been up River Road? Looked at the snowmobile tracks? Side of the night, really?
No, can't say I have.
Mark, I don't want to belabor the point, but a simple solution to what our attorney had just brought up, is the tires. My tires are rated for street use. The other ones I put on in the fog, the Nobbies, are not. It's that simple. When you think about it.
That would be, then the police would have to parse that out, if they were going to pull you over.
All you got to do is look at it, it says right on the side of the tire, not for street use.
The distinction that keeps coming up in my mind is the, the distinction between the UTVs and the ATVs, and that could be a simple one. The minute it's, it's two side-by-side, it has a different look, and arguably a different use in many cases than a straight-up ATV, so I just put that out as for consideration. There might be some opportunity for a distinction there. I don't know that we have to treat the ATVs and the UTVs exactly the same.
I don't think you should.
I'm with you, I, I, there is a distinction in my mind with the ATVs, and I don't think they should be allowed. UTVs, I don't, you know, I would be up for looking at it, allowing them for, you know, ones like, you know, I was having Mr. Powers here, ones that he uses that, you know, is set up, but ATVs, I just don't think that's something that's going to be proper to be used, having people run around on that for the safety reasons, and, I guess, Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, I'm, you know, like, we have these rivers, and then people want to cross the bridges, you know, like to, you want from the north end to the south end, or whatever. You're going to have to be allowed to, to be able to go across the river, so, rather than taking a chance of falling through ice or whatever, this and that, but ATVs are used in the summer, golf cart, you know, they're going to have to cross the bridges. And we're going to have to have a, a, some kind of a trail where they, didn't you say, Megan, before, we had, we had special areas they could go, and now that's washed out from the flood?
Well, I looked at that again. One was to go down into Folsom Park, which is now a greenway area, and there's, besides being on the trails, we don't, you know, we're trying to keep them out of the greenway.
So these people actually have to have a trailer, and trailer their units?
Yeah.
Whatever, if we're doing it, let's do it right.
Change the tires. Drive it on the street. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything on this? Discussion, direction for Megan at all, what we want to do? Because that's what we need to do, is give her direction. I mean, do you want to look at UTVs, or, or do you want to consider ATVs, or...
We leave golf carts to the golf courses. ATVs, no. UTVs, if they're street legal.
And then you're back to your list of brakes, lights, turn signals, whatnot?
Street legal, yeah.
All the street legal stuff?
What about, like, I'm not trying to be difficult, but you're going to see more and more different things, right? I mean, you already see motorized scooters, you see motorized skateboards, all these other things that people are putting on the streets. Are, are we just going to say, unless it's a UTV, or a car, or a motorcycle, or moped, I guess, would be the four things that...
Neighborhood electric vehicle, too, there, so...
There, I was going to say, the memo, or the part of the memo that I put in, actually talks about some of that stuff.
Right.
It was 25 pages long, so I only took, took this section.
And it talked about, like I said, it talks about that, and you're just going to see, they're going to be able to put motors on everything, you know, now, and, you know, just, just so you know, is, that's what people are going to want, it seems.
How, how is Grand Forks, since they allow, what do they allow? Grand Forks, what do they allow?
They allow UT, they allow UTVs. I don't remember off the top of my head exactly their whole process, but I actually, I believe I have one of the officer's, police officer's names. I don't think they've really had any issues, but I can call him back and just verify that with him, because I really don't think, he said most people...
Your demo will know.
Well, he, he said that most of them, you know, the UTVs, they spend quite a bit of money on them, they don't want them wrecked, so they are cautious, you know, they, they they're, they pay attention to traffic, so...
I actually had mine looked at by the city of Grand Forks, and even took the mayor for it, right? But...
Name, just name dropped the number?
Well, just happened to be a walking by, Mark, and I know the guy, he knows me, and I had Pete Hagan, a police officer, I can't remember his name, Mike, but he, public service officer, but anyway...
His demo?
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Tim. But they, they looked at it, and I went in and talked to a gal in the, in the office, and I got her name over here. And I think the information in your packet has changed, because they said no traffic on, like, South Washington and Columbia Road. Later on, they changed it, it's wide open. But like I, I told the, I told Pete Hagan, I said, you drive one of these things down in South Washington, you're nuts. You're just asking for trouble.
I seen him on 42nd.
Yeah, 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 so I, I don't go anywhere, I stay out of harm's way, and...
That's you, but there's some others out there.
You mean, you used to, because you can't do it right?
Yeah, but they looked it over, and they were pretty impressed, but there, again, like Megan says, if you're going to do it right, it's going to cost you some money, but...
Well, the other factor for being careful, it isn't just about the dollars invested, because in almost any collision with a regular automobile, the UTV operator loses, just based on the, the mass of the vehicle. You don't want to have collisions with automobiles on a UTV. That disparity would be problematic.
Unless it's a UGO.
I might sit home with Megan and give her some, straighten her out. Well, some tidbits, like, I have a windshield on the front and rear of mine, it doesn't come that way, I bought it, though. And can you imagine going 40 miles or more down the road and have a dragonfly fly in and hit you in the head? It's like driving a motorcycle with no flaring on it.
You have that thing 40 miles?
No, that is...
So let's, let's see that she comes back with some stuff for UTVs, is there anything else in this, do we want to, looked at changing? Any recommendations anybody saw that they would like to give Megan at this time?
You just brought a good point, on a UTV, windshield or eye protection, just the same as on a motorcycle, you're required to have eye protection. So that should be part of it, Megan, whatever you put together. Shame on me for not thinking of it sooner.
Do you sell safety laws? Mr. Vetter?
Chime in. I guess I'm not going to be in favor of anything other than something similar to snowmobiles, using the quickest route to get out of town. I don't want to see UTVs, ATVs, or any other types of vehicles as a mode of transportation within town. I can understand if they're getting out of town to ride the ditches, go on private property out of town to have trails set up, and rather than trail, trail arm, drive them the quickest way out of town... way out of town, just as snowmobiles are, I don't have a problem with that, but I don't want to see them running around town.
One more quick question, do you guys want to leave the commercial use in place for ATVs?
I think we should, they use them for snow and spraying and various other things, right?
We only have one company, and they always get a permit for two, so, but if, as long as you guys want that to stay.
Does, does the state have a permit for theirs?
They have.
That they drive back and forth?
Uh, you know, they.
To the garage that they get for nothing?
They actually.
Good question. Where do you want them to go?
Utility equipment from ball field to ball fields.
Yes, I think we should continue that.
Okay.
I, I think.
Kind of related, not commercially, I know a number of people that have plows blades, whatever you want to call it, on the front of their ATVs, and they do a number of people's driveways and sidewalks throughout their neighborhood. Do we allow that? Don't we allow that? Are, are we going to get that stripped, that we're now stopping some people that's trying to know about neighbors?
I think within reason, that can go by, I mean, that's just being a good neighbor. That, that's my thought.
Snow emergency.
There you go.
Okay, okay.
All right.
I think we're good there.
Okay. All right, move on, number four, request for direction on parcel number 83 dot zero four two four nine dot zero zero. Ms. Nelson?
I gotta turn something on. There's a little confusion in the department that we need to talk about, so I'm going to turn this on, so you guys. Um, it is the lot that is highlighted in green. That is a parcel that is being asked about. Okay, so.
Looked at.
Perfect, okay. This property went tax forfeiture in 2017. Um, let's see, on the RCA, I have a list of specials that have been applied. All the ones that have 14 years remaining were assessed in 2007. The one with 17 years was assessed in 2010. The last one was assessed in 2014, and the last time we received payment on this parcel was in 2012, so we've never received anything for paving, and that was for the paving that goes right in front of that property. We've received numerous calls, because this lot, rather large lot, is only, or is listed for $10,000 on the county website, interests a lot of people, as soon as they hear about the special assessments, they are no longer interested. Anyone I have talked to, I've told them that, you know, or they've asked, I've been asked numerous times, you know, would the council be willing to work something out on this? I said, "You're more than welcome to come and ask them." No one has wanted to, until now. I've been contacted by a gentleman who lives a couple hours away from here, and this is his request, directly from him, he is interested in purchasing the property, he would like the council to waive all of the special assessments on it, he would purchase it for $10,000, and then its value, his current value is around $24,000, he would sell it, or he would buy it for $10,000, get it back on the tax rolls, and then sell it to somebody who would like to build a home on it. I told him that I would ask, instead of having him drive the two hours here, and maybe not be here for very long, and then have to drive the two hours back, I told him that I would just ask.
I would have loved to have him in front of me.
I figured this much, no. But I'm considering the amount in special assessments, I, I kind of had, kind of have a feeling on how you guys are going to address this, but I guess my question is, if somebody's interested in building on this property, you know, is it a case-by-case basis, if, you know, they ask for a percentage or a portion taken off, or are you not interested at all at reducing the specials? I guess I just want a little bit of direction from you guys, if you're willing to entertain any of those proposals.
It's 30,000 square feet.
Yeah, it's like, six tenths of an acre, a little more than six tenths of an acre.
A lot, that would be.
Mr. Vedder? If it'd be short and sweet, I'd entertain any reasonable offer.
Okay.
This is not a reasonable offer.
Reasonable is the word.
Never hurts to ask.
Mr. DeRis?
Thank you, Mr. President. So the, the paving has 20 years on the front and 17 on the end?
Yes.
So the, what year did they, how many, what, what was the initial terms on all those?
The initial terms for all of them is 20 years.
So they paid, so why, you can't defer paving specials, so how are, is, are they not going down?
Because we are not receiving a payment.
The city still has to pay on it, so you can't defer, by law, you can't defer paving specials.
We can't defer, but, but they're, they're accruing, because it sits in tax forfeiture, so.
So you're deferring them, you're, you're taking them and transferring back out, right? I mean.
Um, it's not on the RCA, but the first five had an interest rate of 6.1%, so everyone in this area that had those specials put on at 6.1% when we collect it, there is additional money going in, it's not just the bare minimum, so, I don't, Carla, I don't know if you know, we're not, are we in the, you know what, I can't even say, because all of these specials are tied to different rolls, and depending on the roll number, depends on which bond it goes to, and that sort of thing, so I guess I didn't think that far ahead to see.
And these are, and these are just self-enrolled, so if there, if there's any rolls that were in the hole, they've been the ones at the golf course, because the golf course actually was coming, they were being supplanted by the new housing, and we quit doing that, but we used to transfer out of there to pay for those specials. But we, there's, we haven't done any of that for any of them down in the South Bend.
And then, I guess.
So there's money, obviously, in the count.
Thanks. Is, is there any setbacks? I know the one across the street was basically unbuildable because of the setbacks and stuff, right? Is there any easement setback issues on this one?
Shouldn't be, not to get us involved up there.
Just maybe a, some shape issues, right? I mean, is basically what you're.
We couldn't split it into two?
Well, if you split it into two, the lot to the east would obviously look similar to the one, you know, right next to it.
Right.
It wouldn't be that hard, the house would sit back a little bit, so it would have less of a backyard, but the one that's off of the north-south road, it would be a house, and that would be about it, there wouldn't be much.
Yeah, I was out, I looked at the lot.
Yeah, I, I don't foresee that ever selling as two individual lots, because you have to have a 15-foot side yard setback off of one of the streets, and the other street requires a 30-foot setback, so, I mean, it, it would literally just be a house in there, and that would be it, so.
They could put a garage.
Rent it out.
But you couldn't put a house on there, so that.
I guess, my, my thinking is similar to what Mr. Vedder said, is entertain offers, but nothing is not an offer, I guess. You know, 50,000 for specials, I've been on the record many times saying it's not a terrible amount, especially for a six, 65 hundreds of an acre, lot, it's a giant lot, it's a great lot, in a great town, for $10,000, you'd have a $61,000 lot, I think it's worth all of that, but, like I said, if someone wants to come in with something a little less than that, I think we could wheel into you.
Okay.
Did, did Steve ever get back to us on this, Rob?
He did. The only thing he said is that there's an easement going through the backyard for sanitary sewer.
Which would impede if he needs to split it, the one on the right wouldn't be.
You say the backyard, between?
Alley.
The south line.
If there was an alley, where the alley would be.
Yeah.
South line.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just a 10-foot easement on that.
Ain't going to hurt it.
Is there a sewer back there or not?
Yes.
Right now, we got two saying reasonable offer will be looked at, the one in front of us is not acceptable. Are you, are you in agreement with that, Mr. Riappell?
I certainly am.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
I'm in agreement also.
They would certainly be welcome to offer more, you know, to come back with a counter of their own, and for us to consider.
It's still $20,000 less than a lot in Grand Forks, at this full price.
For a bare lot, with no specials on it.
For a bare lot with no special.
Yep.
And this is enormous, I mean, someone could really enjoy that space.
It's a big lot.
It's a lot for the mayor's house.
You, you have your answer.
Perfect, thank you.
Number five, review of device usage policy.
Got to get our torches ready here.
Saving the best for last. All right, thank you, Mr. President. I first of all wanted to say, as it's my first opportunity to address everybody, thank you for allowing me to intern here in the east Grand Forks. It's been really great so far this first month, and it's been great to work with Mr. Murphy as well, and I look forward to the next few months being able to work with all of you. As far as the device usage policy, this is in reference to the devices that the mayor and the city council would be hopefully getting soon, and I put it together by request of Mr. Murphy. I use some other cities' usage, usage policies for guidelines, as well as the one that was forwarded to me by Mr. Galstead from the Water and Light Department. Right now, it's just in a rough draft point, and I'm just really looking for any comments or concerns, or anything to be added to it or omitted that's in it right now. Haven't really had much feedback to this point of what was even being asked for to be in the policy itself, so that's kind of where I'm at right now, and just wanted to make note that at the beginning of it, where it says electronic communication system use, that's something that's already been adopted by the city, and I just felt it proper to paste it in there at the beginning for reminder. And then one thing I've already seen is on page 30, under the ownership title, where it reads table, it should be tablet, so I'm sorry if anybody thought they were getting a table from the city, but it was supposed to be tablet, and then I ended up replacing everywhere where it said tablet with device, so that's why it didn't get changed, so, but with that, I'm just looking for any direction on it.
Mayor?
So the one thought I had, I sure enjoy that it provides for these devices to be used personally, it would be really, really hard to, to stop that, and so you might as well allow it, and I, I like that you're doing the malware, spyware, Trojan, all that, as for scanning the device for those infections. I wonder, as I read through it, I wonder if there's any way we could put in a little stronger wording as to how we would use them to go to a personal email account or a familiar site, not to just surf the web, because that's where you're going to pick up a lot of random stuff, and even reminders about opening emails and what they look like, anything else to strengthen, because no matter how well you scan, and how well you load and equip these with anti-spyware, malware, and whatnot, it seems they always seem to pick up that stuff. So if there would be any stronger wording in the, in the heading of personal use, that could say, "Let's really limit the exposure of these devices to unfamiliar websites, and when opening emails, make sure it's from a familiar sender," all that kind of stuff.
Mr. DeRis?
Thank you, Mr. President, I, again, it's, you've done a great job, I'm wondering if you've talked to Mr. Thompson?
I did, I sent him an email yesterday, so it was pretty.
Has he?
Late notice with it, but he hasn't gotten back to me yet.
Okay.
But, yeah, I figured that would probably be an important.
Yeah, I think.
Person to check with.
Taking his recommendations and implementing is probably more beneficial than some, most of ours, because he's involved in it pretty extensively. The only other thing I thought of is, you know, you talked about using the, the, what is it, the acceptable use policy that we already kind of have, right? Is it the acceptable use that we already have?
Yeah, at the very beginning of it.
Yeah.
The electronic communication system use.
Right, and I would just say, you know, you make reference to the mayor and the council and all this, I would say if we can just make this a uniform device policy for whomever, you know, whatever device we are going to use throughout the city, it's going to be the same for council, city employee, and make sure that the, the scope and the, and the focus is on uniformity in the city. That would be my only suggestion, is, I don't know if that, if, if that works for what you would want to use it for, you know, employees of the city that would use, that may have a device, if, if you wouldn't want to be, if you would want a different standard, but to me, I would think that the council would be held to the same standard as everybody else, so.
Yeah, maybe the portable ones as well, I mean, maybe the difference between some of the, maybe the ones that are issued than the, than the ones that we have at our desktops and that.
The ones at desk.
Yeah, no, I mean, the desktops.
Don't search for vacations on there and stuff like that.
Are you talking about including the phones and stuff, too?
Right, and kind of, and I guess, yeah, you could incorporate everything into one, is if you're going to use the acceptable use, you'd sign this, and it would just kind of be the blanket for any device that you use, you know, in the city, so, whether it's mobile phone, or laptop, or tablet, or who knows what they're going to have, 10 years, your hologram projector out of your ring, or whatever, so, that would be my suggestion, but thank you for doing this.
Yeah, one thing that I had on here, a question was on acceptable use on page 30, talk about social media, you know, and we as a city have a, you know, either Facebook account, or, say we have Twitter, or whatever it may be, maybe that's something we need to look at to be allowed to be used, so let's say we're dealing with the city's site, Facebook, or Instagram, or Twitter, or whatever it is, the websites, include all websites that you own and related to, that you could conduct business with those sites, because right now it says.
Yeah.
Doesn't allow it.
But in our press release for an upcoming event or something.
Our Twitter feed would go dark, because you can use anything.
Typically, you're going to want to make sure that you funnel that through a specific individual, whether whoever's designated, whether it's Mr. Murphy, IT, or whatever, so you're not having everybody in it.
Well, I guess, there's two things, accessing it and, and modifying it are kind of two different things.
Exactly, I'm not talking about modifying, I'm just talking about accessing it, because you can't access it, so.
Because there's a lot of questionnaires and things that go out on city's area transit website, Twitter, you know, Facebook, same with the MPOs, that I need to access that way, rather than through, you know, they don't send them out specific emails, they put it on those sites, so.
Right. Should you even include the east Grand Forks Police Department's Facebook page, you know?
Right.
Yes.
Stuff like that, so. They're not, have an issue with anything else?
What page is that?
Thirty. Page thirty.
Thirty, under.
Anybody else have anything? See none?
I'm a torch away.
Appreciate it, that was easy.
All right, thanks.
Motion to adjourn.
Who?
Move by Riappell, second amendment, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion is carried, means adjourned.